Next item, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action items who were signed in, what was the, by seven?
Seven fifty-five.
Seven fifty-five. By submitting a blue card to the board secretary, may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. There is a three-minute time limit and comments made to the board. Kim Stanton would like to come to speak to the board about the historic Fortson Library and mitigating and preserving art and would work in the new bond.
Hi.
Kim, can you tell us what city you are from? I'm sorry, it wasn't.
Oh, I live in Westland.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. I am the media secretary at Fortson High School. I prefer to think of it as a stewardship. I'm also an alumni of Fortson High School. And my concerns are, and piggybacking off of what we're speaking about, we have one of the most unusual, beautiful, fabulous libraries on the planet. This high school is amazing. This library is a crown jewel of this city. And we have some things that we really need to start mitigating, whether it's looking at climate control in there because of the expansion and contraction of the wood. We have all of the original furniture in there. We've got fading of the tapestry. We've got some peeling on the paintings. We need to do something to preserve this history now. I know that things have been done and some of the paintings have been restored, which has been probably 20 years ago, I think now. They're kind of peeling off the wall. Some of them have had water damage from the flooding. Plaster is starting to deteriorate. Climate control, I know, would be one thing. The big tapestry that's there, they sell a film by 3M that can go on the inside of the windows that would mitigate some of that. The fading is so bad. I don't know if we can get someone from the DIA to come in and see if they can restore any of this. But really looking at preserving this particular room, I think, is paramount. And it's not in the plans. I'm looking at the plans. I'm reading the plans. I see all these things. I see nothing that says Fortson Library, not for climate control, not for perhaps glass over some of these paintings so that they can not receive any further damage. So I would love to see the board and the companies that we're working with take a step back and reevaluate as we move forward in the plans that are going on and looking at spending some time, because this is the 100-year building. And I am doing my utmost best in, you know, taking time with polishing wood and cleaning that place up. And really, it's a stewardship for me. It's not a job. I absolutely love it. And whatever we can do to make this happen, I'm here for it. And I beg you to rethink it and do something to help that happen. Thank you.
President. Thank you, Kim.
Kim, thank you for your passion for our beautiful library over there. A question for you. Do you have any idea what happened to that beautiful artwork and artifacts who were along the stairway going up to the tower? No?
I don't. I don't. I will scour around. I'll be at Fortson full-time come the 23rd because of the changes, which will allow me some more time to look for more archives upstairs and look through some of the storage areas and try to find some of the things that have happened. I know with many different hands that have gone through and many different people that have worked there, things get moved, things get painted, things don't return, not under my watch.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Next?
Next, Marian Mortadoff from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about ALC, the Annual Leadership Conference.
Hello. Good evening. The last school board meeting, I talked about how Education International is pushing the two largest teachers' unions, and the American Federation of Teachers, and the National Education Association into the Fourth Industrial Revolution. The teacher unions are parroting the Gates Foundation's reimagined education campaign, which is being buoyed by the World Economic Forum and the United Nations Education Scientific and Cultural Organization, UNESCO. Altogether, the AFT, the NEA, the WEF, and UNESCO are all reimagining a new post-human education system as they simultaneously push for ed tech overhauls. After that meeting, I became aware of an annual leadership conference held on October 20th through the 23rd in Traverse City, Michigan, organized by the Michigan Association of School Boards. During that conference on Friday, there was a session called "Education Opportunities", with a presentation from 10:15 to 11:15 a.m. called "AO5: Mobilize the Future of School: How Pioneers Inform Education Systems Amidst Disruption." It was described as schools play a critical role in preparing students to be productive global citizens and capable members of the modern workforce for the Fourth Industrial Revolution. The World Economic Forum characterizes high-quality learning models for the Fourth Industrial Revolution as Education 4.0. This framework, established before the pandemic, must now exist in a disruptive world of social, economic, and political instability where 19th and 20th century ideologues are crumbling. In this conversation, we will examine pioneering schools that embrace the critical characteristics of Education 4.0 and are mobilizing the masses to shift education. I would like to request, on behalf of the taxpaying community and the parents, and I'm a taxpayer from the community, and a grandparent of students, a disclosure on who from the school board attended this conference and an explanation of what was presented concerning Education 4.0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe the next meeting.
Next, Hassan Ayun would like to come to speak to the board. Okay, I don't, I can't read his writing about what he would like to come to speak to the board about.
You guys know what this is? Good morning. Good afternoon. Start the time. Suggestion would be to reconvene at a later time at an auditorium someplace where it's safe and you can safely house as many people. This way, you don't have, I know the egress is fine here, you've got lots to exit, but people typically go out the door they came in. And so now you're having hundreds and hundreds of people go out, one set of double doors, which are blocked by the people that are wanting to protest right now. So if they want, if you want to end it for tonight, they can stay outside all night and they can do what they got to do. It's fine. We'll monitor that. But to have some leave and only allow some back in, that's going to cause a lot larger problem for you. And it's going to cause a lot larger problem for us. We're here to help. However, we can only do so much. And I don't want to put my officers, you know, in the middle of a situation that's really rough. And it's not safe for you folks either. I mean, I don't think any of this is going to be violence. It's just going to be loud, voicers pushing and shoving like we have now. But it's going to be, you know, multiplied if we're having people leave and come and leave and come. And we're saying we're trying to get a fire marshal count.
That would make it more palatable than basically, like I say, look, we recognize that this venue is not large enough for this crowd. We want to be able to do this safely. So we are going to cancel this meeting and we will let you know when we find an appropriate place for everybody to come and comfortably.
Is that really a good idea?
I don't know. I don't think it's, I mean.
You guys remember that? All you guys are liars, except for the new people. You guys knew about the fire marshal. You guys sat there, lied to the crowd, and an officer came and says, there's a fire, we can't tell them because they're not buying it. It's right on body cam. You got me on Facebook. Go watch it. Mr. Berry?
Please address the chair only.
I'm addressing everybody. This is the chair here. He's on the chair. You just became brand new, huh? This is all about? You're going to disrespect us like Roxanne McDonald? Right? Forty-nine seconds. What do you want to tell me? You want to disrespect me in forty-nine seconds? I got the chair. Please don't say nothing to me. When you got the chair, you could talk. I'm the guy in charge. I got thirty-seven seconds, thirty-three, thirty-one, thirty, twenty-nine, twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty, nineteen, eighteen. Every single one of you people disrespected the community. Nine, eight, seven, six, four, three, two, one, and...
Next, Jackson Wagner from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about
Three months ago, an angry mob claimed that six books were corrupting the youth. A few days later, we sat through hours of hate speech, and those of us who spoke out against the push to ban books were heckled, interrupted, shouted over, followed back to our seats, et cetera. They would go on to challenge a total of 12 titles, nine of which thankfully survived the process this board claims is in place. Unfortunately, three of those titles were banned. I've brought one of those banned books with me today. I bought this book, Red, White, and Royal Blue, by Casey McQuiston at Motor City Pride in Detroit back in June. I read it in late September or early October before that meeting three months ago. It's a phenomenal story about love and relationships, but it's also a book about the dangers of shame, prejudice, and the consequences of forcing people to hide who they are from the world. I was shocked when this book was banned, and I can feel it in my bones that it was banned to appease the mob, not on its merits. Earlier today, I was at the Welcome Center at Henry Ford College, registering for classes. As I was leaving, I saw a plaque from when the building was first opened in 2012. I recognized the names of two current trustees immediately. It's remarkable and admirable that over a decade later, you're still serving this city's education system. But will you be remembered for years of service or for appeasing a mob fueled by prejudice and fear? Two thousand four hundred twenty years, ten months, and twenty-six days ago, Socrates, the father of Western philosophy, died. Like the 12 titles which were challenged, Socrates was charged by his opponents with corrupting the youth because he encouraged young men, many of whom were the same age as today's high school students, to question the norms of their society. The men who forced Socrates to drink poison were well-respected members of their community. Yet despite all the popular support for his execution, all of those men are only remembered today as the villains of that story. Socrates, on the other hand, is hailed as a hero and a martyr by scholars in every field. Like his student Plato and Plato's student Aristotle, influenced Christian and Islamic philosophy and modern science. The man who questioned the prevailing social order and norms of his day is remembered so fondly, not just because his students kept his memory alive, but also because justice eventually wins out over power and prejudice in the end. This book was challenged because it questions the cruel and intolerant norms of an earlier generation built on shame, the same thing Socrates was killed for. What will...
Next, Crystal Paulson from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about
I had a couple of parents reach out and they wanted to know what your stance was on the mask. But as you guys know, I questioned last year at the same time, didn't I? So if you guys could please state when you do your comments. But we found more books. So I'm going to read from... Lost Boy and Lost Girl in a Sad Etzel. Joseph Kalender, serial rapist, child abuser, and murderer is the intrepid, marked, sweet-natured golden boy whose stunning good looks are rather creepily overstressed. Keeps uncovering nauseating things Tim and Philip involved. The local authorities aided by Detective Tom Possor, unknown from mystery, 1989. The face of the adolescent boys lured away by a sexual predator connected that of a lost girl herself and otherworldly seductive force who haunts those fail to save her and in nod to the shrubs sometime of Stephen King. And it's racial, too. So dumbbells are calling her mother effer. Philip had one staged whisper to him, tell me you take that every day. Philip says she, they're not ignorant, they're not dumb, and they're certainly not all black. They're just afraid they're, they'll freeze to death if they lose their gas. We work out a little deal, that's all. I mean, come on, guys. Like, we find more books. And obviously, it's not about gays, so. But to address what was played by Cash, I stood out in that hallway to make sure none of my people went there. Because if anybody was going to step that line, me as one of the mothers, I was ready to step in the middle. Remember that. Because what was said and what was captured, we owed, we're owed a little bit more respect because we're not jokes. We put you in your seats. Respect. This, just stop, please. Have a good day.
Next card?
Next card, Stephanie Butler from Dearborn wants to speak about COVID protocol.
I also wanted to address on the videos, you know, now that the FOIA request was done and we, the public, got to see the actual videos. You know, you guys sat up here and you pointed your fingers at the crowd, the parents, the taxpayers. You demanded an apology from us, and you said that we put words in your mouth about this fire marshal business. And I think that you all owe us an apology because, as it turns out, in the process of you guys violating the Open Meetings Act by having your private meeting in the back with your discussions and all this other stuff, which is obviously a violation, you guys all sat here and lied and made, and you blamed it on Mr. Shammy, who's not here and wasn't here at the time to defend himself, about accusing him. But going back and watching the video from different angles and watching the body cam from the police officer, it was clear that he was called up here by this body and given the story about the fire marshal because Ms. McDonald was told that he was our leader. We don't have leaders. Each parent is responsible for their own, they think for themselves. We're not led by a leader. But it showed him being brought up here and being fed the fire marshal story. And then it showed them reporting back to the superintendent. And then you guys go into the back where you're discussing meetings and what to do and how to get everybody out and what, should we cancel the meeting, not cancel it? You guys sat and pointed your fingers at the audience last time, at the parents. And you sit up there and you ask yourselves, why is every single meeting like this? Why is there so much hostility? Can you finally begin to imagine, it's called, this board does not take responsibility for any of its actions? And the people are sick of it. We deserve to be told the truth. We shouldn't have to FOIA things to find out what actually took place back there. And then Mr. Shammy, I think he's owed a public apology, too, because you said he put words in your mouth. And he made up the fire marshal thing, which caused this whole uproar, and none of that was true. That stuff that you guys discussed in the back room, and that's something that we clearly saw him being grabbed and told the story of what to come to this microphone and tell the parents that night. So, you know, something's got to change here. And lying and trying to get away with that, like, it all, whatever's done in the dark will always come to light. Remember that. As we stood here and fought for our kids, we were called liars. We were called all sorts of things. We've had to fight out in the public against that. But, you know, the proof is, like they say, the proof's in the pudding, and we have that. So I think it's this board that owes those people an apology. Thank you.
Next, Nabil Athol Layya from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about
Go on to the next one.
Next, Dr. Adib Mosab from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about the board organizational.
Good evening. First of all, to the secretary from Fortson, yes, we need some work on Fortson. I attend the 100-year anniversary celebration. I was very disappointed to see the condition of the auditorium, the condition of the library. That's one point. Second, actually, I was here today with my family and community member to celebrate what would have been the historic appointment of my brother, Adil Muazab, as the president of the board. This was supposed to be a representation of inclusion, a representation of belonging, indication to us as the Yemeni-American community here that we belong. But what do we watch? We watch a power grab. Power grab by some board members here. We watch a power grab that represent exclusion, culture discrimination at the highest level of the system. A good mentor once told me, when people show you who they are, leave them the first time. This board has shown us, one time after another, who they are. And some board in here are racing, racing to be listed after the disgrace and racist Mayor Hubbard. Good for you. Go for that list. You will be there, hopefully, one day. Some board members, especially trustee Planchkov, take upon herself.
He's addressed the board.
Every time she take upon herself to correct and critique Adil. If she doesn't realize that, I hope she can go watch the meetings. Every time he say something, she has to find some way to say something about it or correct it or act like the president. We just hear the recording. She's directing everybody what to do. Even if she's not the president, we watch it in the organization meeting. She's cutting Mr. Berry off. She's cutting everybody. She thinks she can control everything. This racism and culture discrimination need to stop on this board. You preach norms and policies and precedency every time we try to change something. But today, we saw the norms out of the window. Precedence, we don't need to believe in it. We can do whatever we want. Trump and his allies failed in January 6, 2021, to grab the power. And he failed. He failed why? Because they were good people, good people on the canvas board here in Michigan that said, no, we will do the right things even if we, if it doesn't, if it doesn't go our way, we will stand and do, even if we feel uncomfortable with what we're doing, we will do the right things. Unfortunately, there were not enough good people in this room tonight. Stand up for what is right, which was...
Next, Alduhakam Alsada would like to come to speak to the board about the chair's election from Dearborn.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First, congratulations to the new board members. Second, thank you to all of you for your service. We respect you, but we also have the right to disagree when we see something wrong. Like Dr. Adib said, I came today to watch a normal process that has happened time and time again. Vice president becomes a president. We were not aware of any policy. We were not, as a citizen, we voted for all of you. We voted for all of you. As a citizen, for example, trustee Mary should inform the community that she was going to change the rules, what has been going on tonight, this specific election. She comes and then she starts with transparency. As soon as I heard, I don't know her, I never met her, just want to make that very clear. Soon as somebody tells me transparency, democracy, I know they don't mean anything at all. They mean that they are devious, they are actually concious buyer against people and use transparency. We come here to actually congratulate a person who has devoted his life, like all of you, to go through a process. With all due respect to James, to the new chair, I don't have any problem with any of you. I have a problem when you start corrupting the process. You are corrupting the process. The board has, time and time again, are becoming the problem, not part of the solution because of the division you are creating. Tonight was supposed to be an easy process, like it has been going on for years. Wanted to remind you, wanted to remind everyone, that when we start a recall, don't complain and say, why are you doing this against me? Because you are doing it against yourself and against the community.
Lastly, Ann Clark from Dearborn, his last blue card, would like to speak to the board
I'm rather appalled that we're having to do this again and again and again. You were talking about taking care of the teachers. They feel that they haven't been appreciated. Well, now you have books. It's called Assassination Classroom. These are, it's a book series by Y-A-T-S-E-I, well, it doesn't matter. Anyways, where they talk about different ways to kill a teacher. Why in the hell is that in your schools? Why? We're supposed to protect our children and our teachers. This, it's a series, and it's been checked out at Fortson. So why are you guys sitting there like, it's not a big deal? And now more books are coming in that are violent. We're supposed to take care of our children. How is violence educational? Now, if you want to have books on how to get along, how to get along with other cultures, let's do that. We might as well bring the Quran back and the Bible back because that at least doesn't talk about murder. So, I mean, this doesn't even make any sense. And it's like a cartoon series. You're dealing with kids with their malleable. That's like, if they see somebody kicking a dog, well, maybe I'll do that. Because they don't know the difference. But if they're not shown that, they're not going to necessarily do that. So, you know, we just had a six-year-old in a school shooting a teacher. Now, if that's not ringing home to you, that something's wrong with bringing violent books into our children's libraries, you want to put it in the public library, go ahead. But you're responsible for our children, and you're failing again. So recall? Well, I guess that's what your future is, because if you're not going to get off your ass and do something, we will. Thank you.
Any more blue cards?
Nope.
All right. At this point, I'd like to go into forward a follow-up. Trustee Petlicov?
Since a couple of comments were directed, uh, towards me, and I understood I was going to, um, open a sore point. But this all could have been avoided if those who had attended the study session had heard me clearly, I was very clear, read the minutes, that I was, had every intention of asking that we have our ability to vote our, our choice. I was very clear. Trustee Mosip was there, everyone was there. They heard quite frankly that I wanted to adhere to what was in our bylaws and I made no bones about it. We had met much discussion about it. Yes, you were right, Trustee Berry. And I was very clear that.
What did you say?
I said, we had much discussion about it that night.
You said I was right. I just wanna hear it again.
Thank you. So that being said, this wasn't a surprise that I was asking. And if you had been in the district long enough, as I have over the decades I've been involved, even prior to being on the board, this is not something that has not occurred in the past either. I can't give you a specific date. My memory doesn't, uh, uh, jog that way. But the fact is, is that we have not always followed the rotation routine as prescribed by other people's interpretation. And since it isn't a written rule and there are no guidelines, there is nothing for anyone to say that I broke the rules. There are no rules. The rules are what I, is in our bylaws. Because I was comfortable, I did be, no.
This is not the time for the conversation. Citizen participation is finished.
I'm not lying. What I will tell, what I, what I will tell you is, is that when I had a vote presented to me in the past, please refrain from calling out from the audience. When I had the votes taken, I either was in agreement with the individuals that were being selected. This happens to be a time where I had a different choice in mind that I was more comfortable and confident in. I clearly wasn't the only one who felt that way. Everybody had an opportunity to, um, share their vote, which is their voice, which I've always said. I'm not the only one. I was the one willing to stand up and say, I've had enough of having to just go along to get along. I did not wanna continue to do something that I felt I was being forced into. And Trustee Mosip or Trustee Berry had four weeks since that study session to contact me and say, what are your thoughts? What is the problem? Where's the reason? I never heard from either of you. You only, I, when I asked to please call me and I tried to call you back and then we all got kind of off rail yesterday. And the only reason Trustee Berry I called you was because I saw the posting, which was upsetting to me that it was already announced, a presumptive post on a public blog that he was the board president before we had taken a vote. We don't even announce our admin hires until after the vote has been taken publicly. And yet here was this post that it was a done deal. And to me, that, that is not sending the message that I wanna send, that somehow it, it was a predetermined decision. I never liked it and I always argued about it, but did I go to every year's policy committee and ask for it? No, I, when I had the opportunity, I brought it up. I brought it up again this year at the college meeting and said, please look at it again. I brought it up to Trustee Thorpe a couple of years back when he was, but every year we had something get in the way that derailed it. But I have asked about this in the past and this is not the first time. And you also understood how I felt about it after that me, the study session that we had. It wasn't a surprise. If due diligence had been done, you could have come to me and asked what was going on. You didn't have to, um, tell everybody that you were the presumptive, um, winner when we hadn't taken a vote yet. Thank you.
Trustee Berry?
Why would you contact, you don't have to answer. I don't want you to answer. Why would you contact me because I'm posting on social media? Here, I don't, I don't wanna hear an answer. It's my turn to speak. I'm a very respectful man. I'm a very respectful person. I respect all people, okay? My job, don't call me out. We're past that. Both of us refer to the chair as President Thorpe already. We're past to that. You wanna make it personal, be ready for it. I'll be very honest with you. I'm not very happy with you right now. Let me finish. Let me finish, okay? Let me explain why I'm saying I'm a respectful man. What did you want me to go out to the community and say, you know that so-and-so, so-and-so, Mary, what she wants to do? That's not my job. That's not my job. Let me finish.
You're misinterpreting what I've said.
Let me finish. I sat here and listened to you. I wanted to, I wanted to say a couple of things. I said, hey, listen to you. You're saying that we should have went out there and educated the community. That's not my job to go out.
That's not what I said.
Stop interrupting me. I'm still being nice right now.
I can't allow.
Stop interrupting me. Stop interrupting me. Stop interrupting me. Stop interrupting me. So, so, so you saying that Trustee Mosip and Trustee Berry had four weeks to go out and do what? To go out there and.
Talk to me.
Talk to you. You know how many times I tried to reach out to you and you never called back? You know how many times I send you text, thank God for text messages? I sent you a text message yesterday. You tried, I tried calling you.
And I tried calling back?
No, you didn't.
Yes, I did.
Well, okay.
Yes, I did.
So to sit here and, you know, you know, send some comments.
But don't misinterpret my, my word.
You shouldn't have brought my name into this and you shouldn't have brought Trustee Mosip's. It just happens that we're sitting on the same side of the table.
I had Trustee Mosip's brother bringing my name in, so I had to address.
Every time he opens his mouth, you're around the corner waiting for him to comment. Let's, let's be adults about this. Why? Why? He earned enough votes. Last, when he was elected, he got 14,000 votes. You were fired after one term. You were fired after one term. Then you just got reelected by, I don't know, a couple, maybe a dozen votes or something?
Oh, please. Now that's insulting.
Trustees.
If I'm being insulted, I'm gonna be.
Trustee Berry and Trustee Petlicov.
I'm, I'm.
I would ask you to, to end this conversation now.
I'm more than happy to.
Well, then don't start it if you're more than happy to end it.
I was following up from a comment.
Then you address the comments.
Reach out to each other at a separate time and work out your differences for the betterment of the whole board.
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Well, first of all, I'm gonna set the record straight. Trustee Petlicov, you, you don't answer calls when you don't, I've, I've called you multiple times before and you never respond.
That is not.
So I knew nothing will change your mind if I reach out to you. And by the way, when he got elected, he never reached out to me to ask for my vote. When he got elected, he never reached out. When Roxanne, uh, Trustee Roxanne McDonald also went for the presidency, she never called me to ask for my vote. This process was brought forward this December. Oh, and, and the training that we've had and that you would have to field. And we've, we've seen this. This is, this is very obvious to the people to see. And it, it's, it is disheartening and it is, this, this board is broken right now. And there's no, nothing that is gonna begin to try. Like, can I please finish? She always interrupts every time we speak. She cannot even have the patience for us to bring our points across. She's always interrupting. She's this has to stop. This definitely has to stop. This bullying has to stop. And I, I do not, excuse me, excuse me, I'm speaking. And the, the other thing is, I, I, I'm, I'm taking this personally. And you will see from next meeting, there will be things that will be brought to public that I will question every single item on this board, including our stipends, that is the highest in the state. That's gonna be the first item. Thank you.
Trustee Petlicov?
I, I just wanna make one statement. Trustee Mosip, when I was board president and you were, um, being interviewed for the appointment, I went to bat for you and I fought for you to be appointed and you were appointed. So for anybody to say that this is a racial thing, an ethnic thing, is way off base to accuse me of that. I fought hard to make sure that I was in your corner, to make sure you got appointed. And I tried to give you every opportunity to take advantage of that appointment. And I gave you advice. And now you're trying to tell me that it was a, a, a racist thing? No, his brother said it. Excuse me, it was said at the podium that I was, it was a racist thing. And, and that, I didn't say, excuse me. But if you'll recall, I was the one who worked hard to make sure you got that chance to get on the board when, when you had been turned down the last time.
Citizen participation is done.
Is over.
Citizen participation is done.
What, what? No, it's. It said, is the first Yemeni-American. To be elec- but he had, he wasn't elected. He wasn't elected yet. It has nothing to do with that. And he knows very well it.
No, it, it does.
Doctor. Doctor Malekow, do you want to address some of the other items that were brought up during citizen participation?
So I have a few and I appreciate this item being on. I just wanted to comment on the, it was brought up about masks. We put out the memo, but it's personal choice. Individuals can choose to wear the mask and we respect that or they can choose not to. And we will continue to review that and the guidelines that went out. I mentioned that too in my commentary. I didn't get into the mask, but I mentioned that we put out that from Wayne County. So we'll continue to meet and adjust that if necessary. And we've done that for the last three years throughout the pandemic. Um, the media center at Fortson, I do know that Ms. Al Qadri has had the Dearborn Historical Society invol- or Museum involved, but I don't recall all the details of that. So Trustee Berry and, uh, we'll look into that. We'll have Mr. Andrews and people follow up on the, and I will just tell you, I brought my daughter to that room and it's my favorite, uh, room in the, in the school district, to be honest. Um, above going to the library at Fortson. Um, wanted to mention about books. There is a challenge process, so anyone can use it. We've made that very public. Tonight, we announced the, tonight.
Enough.
The, uh, the process is there for challenges and we'll follow it. We'll continue to follow it. And, um, anyone can implement it and we will also, um, you know, again, we have a lot of books in our library. We're also doing our own review with our staff, but that's gonna take time. As I've mentioned with Mr. Martin, Dr. Groover and the media specialists, we'll continue with it. And then we did, I did announce at the beginning of the meeting that we do have a new list that we've developed where parents can opt out of that as well to give parents more choice of any books that were challenged, even if they maintain. I also wanna call up, um, David Mustin and Danielle Elzayat just to comment, um, just to clarify, um, from the, um, situation between the police and the fire. Um, we.
Enough.
Um, at that, that night, um, everyone was doing their best to, um, you know, that situation was something we hadn't seen. We went, we talked about it before. You know, there were 1,300 people at their, our second meeting. And, uh, I think everyone was doing their best and we were trying to think as we were moving. And really it came down to, um, after we debriefed and had the debriefing meetings, that it really was about the, um, you know, the, the police recommendations that we had and we were trying to maintain safety. And I'll just let them briefly clarify that record.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so I just wanted to, we just wanted to clarify that there was not a 911 call made. Um, none of us ever stated that a 911 call was made. Over the years of working, um, with Homeland Security, I've developed relationships with first responders in the county and I have a relationship with, um, the fire chief. So I actually walked in, saw the room was very crowded, saw the students on the floor, um, thought it was a dangerous situation. So I actually called and, um, asked if we could get, uh, somebody over here to let us know if we were violating a fire code. The fire chief then said that he would send the fire marshal over. That's where the talk of the fire marshal came from. In the meantime of waiting for the fire marshal, law enforcement showed up and deemed that the meeting should not go on for safety purposes. So just wanted to clarify.
And I, and everyone was dealing with a situation like I had said last meeting that no one had really ever seen in the state. And so everyone was doing their best in an intense situation.
Please be quiet.
And we then had multiple meetings over that week, the next two weeks, as we got ready for stout. And we have very good, solid protocols. I know Trustee Watts, you were at the meeting and we'll continue to do that. I appreciate you guys clarifying that record.
Sure.
Any other items?
That's it.
Uh, there was also a question about the Michigan Association of School Boards Annual Leadership Conference. I represented the board at that conference. I did not attend that session. There's usually seven sessions that are going on concurrently and that was not one that I attended.